All right, we are recording. Good evening and welcome everybody to the April 7th Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. Okay, we find my flag. I ask that everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, has the board had a chance to review the minutes of the March 17th meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so want to make a motion to accept those?
Second.
Okay, I guess I'll make the motion and Tommy makes the second.
Oh, fine.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, first item on the agenda this evening, Shops of Woodbury Review Submission For Proposed Site Plan Special Permanent ARB Review Of A Mixed Use Development To Include Retail Stores, Restaurants And A Hotel. Said Property Is Located Near The Section Route 32 On Losi Lane And Is Known Of The Village Of Woodbury Tax Maps Section 225 Block 1 Locks 34.1 And 34.22. All right. Uh, let's see, so this is, we're getting together, I guess, to finally dot our i's, cross our t's, and hopefully wrap this up relatively soon. Steve, do you have anything you want to say first before I go to Natalie or or Carlita Dominic?
Yes, good evening, everyone, Dominic Cradisco, I just want to let everybody know that we're all here, Steve Esposito, Kevin Van Heist, our Civil Engineer, John Canning, our Traffic Engineer, and Aaron Goldklang is here as well. We did resolve open issues with the Village Board and we have memorialized that in a signed Developers Agreement covering all open issues with the Village Board and and we've been working on satisfying any outstanding issues with the Planning Board and look forward to resolving any open issues and moving this project forward.
All right, thank you, Dominic. Natalie, you want to, you're the, you and Rick are the only two I have reports from, so Natalie, do you want to go ahead?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so this application was last reviewed by the Board in December. At that time, you suggested that the applicant pursue the necessary actions with the Village Board, which as Dominic suggested, they have completed. You also suggested that they prepare a checklist to kind of streamline the outstanding issues for your review, which was distributed today. And you also requested a will serve letter for the sewerage. We did speak with the sewer administrator and he's going to provide that hopefully by the time of your next meeting. So the plans that we reviewed for our current memo were actually distributed, distributed in January. We have a number of questions that need to be resolved and also a number of comments that we think can just be satisfied per your typical resolution condition that requires compliance with your village engineer's memorandum and we also think that that should include your planner and traffic consultant memos. I don't have to drill down into the details of what we think could be resolution conditions, but the few issues that I think are very relevant to your action on a complying plan include lot area setbacks, parking waiver requested, the retaining walls that are proposed and a few others. So in the recent plan set, a certified survey was prepared by Lincoln Tully and that actually indicates a total lot area of 8.36 acres, which is different from the 9.6 acre development that you previously reviewed. We do expect that the difference is just directly related to the property transfers associated with Losi and Melody Lane right of ways, but it's something that the applicant should confirm. The implication of that area difference primarily impacts the coverage relief that the applicant secured from the ZBA. Just for ready reference, the ZBA agreed to a waiver for 76% coverage where typically 65 is allowed. So if that changes, then that needs to be discussed soon. The January plan also shows that many of the buildings have been slightly shifted, including the hotel and building one. In most cases, the shift in buildings affects only just the side yard and building height table. But in the case of the hotel and building one, it poses a conflict with the ZBA action and an encroachment on the front yard. We think that the applicant can adjust the plan back to the prior configuration, but if not, again, that's something that requires the discussion for a complying plan that you can approve. The parking waiver was discussed on a number of occasions at your last meeting. The applicant was asked to provide an analysis on industry-based parking, which projects that a maximum parking demand of 377 vehicles could be expected where 468 parking spaces are proposed. Prior to the request for the industry-based analysis, I think that Mazer was comfortable with the shared parking analysis and the waiver that was requested, but we defer to their agreement on the same. Our remaining comments on the waiver for parking are related to the proposed land bank parking arrangement. We did account from the number of spaces that are proposed on the plan, which suggests there's 25 that are going to be provided, but I think with the overlap and what's being removed and put in, it's actually going to only be 20 spaces. And again, we know this just because it changes the degree of the waiver that's requested and it's something that the planning board should have to make a decision, just the relevant facts. So it only changes it by a percent, but again, it's just for being thorough, right? Another thing that I wanted to discuss is the retaining walls and prior memorandum, we had asked for additional data to evaluate the constructability and compliance with your code specifically related to the height of the walls. The recent plan submission, we have concerns regarding the retaining wall near building three and four, where the wall approaches 16 feet in height and is shown fairly close to the property line and even crossing it in a look in one location. The separation requirements for the code are two feet off of the property line or half the height of the wall. So this we think needs to be adjusted on the plan if possible. Also with the retaining walls, something that has been included now in your to-do list is ARB and safety. So I'm not sure exactly when these are proposed to be constructed and it's possible that they're going to be a part of phase one with all of the infrastructure improvements and parking areas. If that's the case, then you may want to resolve ARB now rather than require another submission before the Board for just ARB alone for the retaining walls. And again, in consideration of those materials, we recommend that you consider the fencing that's going to be required atop those features for safety, which in their detail, and we think it's appropriate, is required for retaining walls that are over four feet in height. Another topic I wanted to raise and it hadn't necessarily come up previously was the fire truck maneuvering plan. In recent applications, the fire department provided a truck turning template that was something that they were going to pursue as part of their purchasing for 100-foot ladder truck. The ladder truck that's been used in the current plan is smaller than than what their fire department is looking to purchase. So if you agree, we can pass that along to the applicant if they don't have it already. I know Steve was involved in some of those applications so that they could rerun that analysis showing that that truck turning template. And then obviously, since we're getting down to the wire, if there are areas where there are obvious conflicts that can't be mitigated by, say, amountable curb, which has been proposed in some locations, then they should be addressed with plan revisions and we can work with Mazer on that as well. So again, we did craft a bunch of potential resolution conditions. So we've been trying to track those as this application progresses and while things are being deferred to a later date or a later time or for a specific building. We wanted to try to make that easier for everybody when this time came. But one of the things that we wanted to discuss with you now, and that doesn't, this doesn't have a huge impact on this site is the lighting hours of operation. So typically you have a condition for no off-site glare and nighttime friendly dark sky lighting. But, and again, this is like a commercial area industrial, so it's not necessarily going to be an impact to residences around you, but you know, for another hotel application, you require that after 11:00 PM, the site lighting be dimmed for security purposes. So maybe that's something that you would want to consider. And if you do want to include that as a condition, we would be happy to work with council on something that we think is appropriate. Two issues that I didn't raise in my memo, but that came to my attention in preparation for this meeting. One is that the applicant added personal services, service uses to the building heights and side yards table and also to the site parking and loading tables. This wasn't something that was reviewed by the Board previously, and since these uses have different demands for water and sewer and potentially other site impacts, we would recommend that this be deferred to an individual site plan review if they choose to proceed with those uses. But for now, we think that it should be removed from the plan altogether. The second is regarding the monument sign. So previously you had discussed with the applicant, having them submit an application for ARB 120 days after site plan approval. We took a closer look at where the sign is located and it is in a complying location, the height is complying. But we noticed that based on the grading, that's just adjacent to the sign, coming north, you would actually not be able to see the lower three rows of panels, so that's like six built or six shops that wouldn't be visible. So it's something that we think, you know, the applicant would want to review and, you know, if you agree, maybe we just take the monument sign out of this application altogether. And since they have to make another application for ARB, it's just a site plan and ARB application for that. So that's a lot, but that's what I've got. And in addition, you know, Steve, like I said, had circulated the to-do checklist. So that's something that you can go through as well. And just again, happy to answer any questions or concerns. But I do think that a lot of our memo can be addressed after plan sign or after the, if you agree to an action as part of, you know, our review for plan signing, so. That's all.
Well, I'm a little concerned that we're still trying to figure out acreage percentage, because that does affect the ZBA decision.
Yeah, Mr. Gerber, this is Dominic Cradisco. That was an oversight on the part of the surveyor. They did not include the acreage that was going to be acquired from the village in connection with Melody Lane. So we've called that out, it actually matches up nearly perfectly. And so as a result, that survey is being redrawn and recalculated to include the Melody Lane and Losi Lane areas, which it previously did not.
That and the addition of personal services, I don't know why that hasn't come up before, but I mean, we're, we reviewed this plan with so much water and so much sewer. I mean, you're not going to be able to go over that at the site.
I mean, that's, that's correct. It's a, it isn't allowed use under the zone. You know, but I think that Natalie's suggestion of deferring that until a time where, I mean, we don't even know if, if a particular tenant will be qualified within that, within that use group. And, and so it was included as, you know, to provide that flexibility, but to the extent that it requires any additional analysis for water and sewer, my suggestion would be to defer it until such time and unless such time that it even comes up. So we're just not, not sure that it ever would.
I don't, I don't like the camping. At all. All right. Rick, where do you think we should go from here? Because to me, there's a bunch of open items and I don't like, typically this is not a lot of stuff that we leave for signature time. A lot of the times we have this stuff wrapped up before we're offering any sort of a resolution. You're muted. Muted.
Sorry about that. Somebody always has to be that person during the meeting, so I've
Get out of the way.
On my sword for that one. The although this board in its present configuration has not had many applications with very lengthy conditions. That certainly has occurred in the past. And I think because of the the issues that are pointed out by Natalie in our memo, I think that this application is going to have quite a number of conditions as a result of it, because the, the plan as presented now has some issues and so they'll have to be resolved either prior to plan signing or prior to building permit or prior to CO, depending upon the, the merit of each one of those conditions. And so although it hasn't been done recently, it certainly has been done in the past where this board has approved applications, there's quite a number of conditions on them and I, this looks like this is an application that is prime for that. You know, I think part of the, not entirely, but part of the issue is that this is an application where they're not certain what's going to go in there. And so there has to be a number of conditions that are related to that and also a number of conditions that have popped up recently. I think they can be addressed by conditions in the resolution such that I have nothing to add from what Natalie has added. So it's really Natalie's points that she has very ably documented in her memo. And I think we need to, and I can work with Natalie in formulating a resolution and conditions. And if you authorize us to do that tonight, we can have that for your, your next meeting.
Now, how are you going to do the parking waiver, is that going to be conditioned this time?
No, the parking waiver, I think you have the ability to, to waive up to 25%. Or actually, it's not so much of a waiver as simply reduce the requirement for it.
Right.
And I think I'll defer to Natalie, but I believe that we have a number that is close enough that with that percentage, we can come up with a number of parking spaces that you would reduce it to that's within the 25%. We don't have to figure out exactly what percentage you are reducing it. In, in my mind, according to the code, we just have to say that, all right, you're allowed this many parking spaces, which is so many less than the other one, which happens to be within the 25%. So it pursuant to that provision, we simply are going to, or this board is simply allowing X number of parking spaces for this, which is less than the amount otherwise required.
And maybe I can supplement that because I think that there is language, right, that we can develop for a resolution condition. I think, and maybe Phil can chime in too, that he was comfortable with the prior shared parking analysis based on his prior memo, but I don't want to speak for you, even though I just did. Okay.
So, yeah, just chime in for a second, Mr. Chairman. So the, the shared parking analysis that was done and then updated based on industry standards supports the shared parking on the site. And when we addressed that back in our November 2020 memo and our only comment was, you know, for the overall site, it, it worked, there's certain areas where some of the buildings, depending on what goes in there, you know, the parking may be a little tight, but people will have to walk a little further. We also, at the time, had looked at the land bank parking, which I think is also reasonable. And I think Natalie, in your draft conditions, you mentioned about, you know, it's up to the building inspector as they come in with each use, I think it was an item C, sub-item D, that the shared, the land bank parking would be under the purview of the building inspector to determine whether or not any of those spaces would have to be made into real space. So, you know, from, from an analysis standpoint, they've demonstrated it, it's consistent with industry standards. I think, you know, the waiver is fine and as long as Natalie's condition there relative to the, you know, the future potential need for any of the use of those land bank spaces, I think we should be good.
Right, and then the only thing that I want to just add is when I talked about the difference in what the applicant's plan shows now as proposed land banking, the number of spaces versus what I had thought that I discovered it, perhaps they can weigh in at this time, having received my memo, did you agree or is there a difference? What's the ultimate proposal so that the planning board knows?
So Natalie, my suggestion would be that we go with your number. It's the lower number. And if we ever have to do it and we come back with a higher number, I don't think the board would be, would have a problem with that.
Makes sense.
Is there any possibility with the adjustment of the retaining wall positions that the parking provisions, parking spaces would have to be taken out or, or changes would ripple through to the parking lots behind retaining walls?
Kevin? No, I don't think so. I think we can resolve the retaining wall concern without having to impact parking.
And I think to, just to add to that, there, that's a good point, Jonathan, and also the issue with the turning truck movements for the fire, for this, this other alternate fire truck. If that was to result in something more than, say, a mountable curb, then it requires just further discussion with the Board. You know, I wouldn't, you know, that's not something as part of plan signing that we could say, you know, that that's okay. If that makes sense.
It makes sense, but I, I, Rick, I know you said we've done this before and I'm going to go with you on that one because you've been here a lot longer than I have. I, I don't like leaving open items like this out there that we, you know, we're going to potentially come back and rediscuss. The whole idea was the button is holding up and make sure this, this was a nice, pretty package when it came, came back here. So I'm not happy, but it is, it, it is what it is. I feel we're kicking the can. I feel we're leaving way too many things open. But if you're telling me that we have no choice, we, we have no choice. I'm just letting it know, be known to the public and to this board that I'm not happy with the way this is going right now. So what is, what is the exact motion we need to waive the parking? Because I, we're going with, we're waving, what percentage or what number of spots are we waving?
Natalie, do you have the number of spots that are acceptable?
And quite honestly, they shouldn't be on Natalie, but this, this should be from the applicant telling me what waiver they want.
So the, the number of parking spaces on the plan is 468. And Kevin, do you have the plan open there to pull the the code requirement?
That's 578, not to interject, so it's a
So that's 110 spaces.
And I guess 19%.
Correct, 19%.
Right, and that would be the worst case scenario. If the land bank parking was built out, then it just decreases the percent of waiver required.
So what's the number of spaces that are there, 490, you said?
468.
I'm sorry. 468.
Yeah. And Natalie, I think you said there were, your number was 20, right, for, for land bank?
Yes.
So the land, if you want to sort of roll it all together with the land bank, it would be 468 plus 20, which would be 488. And that would be, let me just do the math here slowly.
16%, I believe.
Yeah, 16%.
Yeah.
I'm going to take a stock off. All right, so we're looking for a motion for 16% reduction in required parking spaces?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, it's better that we say that we are approving 488 spaces, including land bank spaces, when 578 or otherwise required under the code, which is within your ability to reduce that amount.
But what about, Rick, what we're proposing at this stage, which is to hold back the land bank, which is 468?
There's 468, but there's 20 land banked.
Correct.
So you just put all three numbers in the motion.
Right, I think that's a good idea. Natalie, you can work on that, I'll work on it with you.
Yeah, it's something I think we can all come to an agreement on.
Pretty simple math, but we're all under pressure here on, on Zoom.
But the planning board has to make the waiver, that's the
So it's, it's, it's 468 out of 578, which is a 110 space reduction or a 19% reduction. With the ability for the building department, I believe, we, was the way we were discussing it, to require an additional 20 parking spaces to be provided, which would bring the total to 488 or a 16% waiver of the 578 required. I hope somebody's recording that.
I would, I would suggest a motion as follows. A motion pursuant to the Village of Woodbury Code to reduce the amount of required parking spaces from 578 to 468 parking spaces with 20 land bank spaces.
That's nice and simple, thank you, Rick.
Did you get that, Claudia? Okay. I will offer the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, by Tommy D. and the second, any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, that's the parking waiver. So how's, how the other board members feel? Do you feel we're in a position to authorize council to draft a resolution of approval with the conditions in H2M memos and all those that have come up during these past 18 or so months, this application?
Well, will the retaining walls be addressed in that also, be that they're so close to property lines and even crossing property lines?
Well, we're going to see those plans, right, Rick, before we just see
Yes, they're going, they're going to submit new plans. There's a new survey that has to be submitted with it and they need to do that very quickly. If they want to go ahead, I mean, they can't hold us up from a condition by not submitting something, so they will have to submit that. I would say, Natalie, I'll leave it to you, but we've done this before, Monday at the latest for revised plans and revised survey, so that this can be put together. Addressing these issues and whatever issues cannot be addressed in those revised plans, Natalie and I and Kelly will work on putting together a resolution, things like the retaining walls can be addressed in that resolution indicating that they have to be adjusted. And if they're not adjusted in the plan that's being revised, then we would say that prior to the first building permit, that they would have to be modified in the plan, otherwise they can't get a building permit. And there are other things that we would normally hold up a lot of these issues. The, the most critical, we would hold up by plan signing. But I, I don't think there are too many of those, but Natalie and I will go through them carefully. And the, the other big milestone part where you normally have conditions that must be satisfied by a certain trigger date would be the building permit. And that's very significant for an applicant because they can't do anything on the project until they get those things done. There are some things that don't have to be done by building permit and some that can't be done by building permit and you would normally push those out until prior to CO, so that they couldn't get a CO until those things were done. But we've done this previously, the board has done this previously. The, the most extensive of which was the WP3 resolution, but we've done it on others as well.
I don't think that's a great example, so.
I was just going to say, that's not probably not the best.
Yeah.
It's not going to be anywhere near what that was and that's what I'm talking about, is that it won't be anywhere close to the worst that you've had. But we will be able to do that.
Okay. Robert, any comments, questions? Robert, any comments, questions, concerns?
Natalie has something about a well on the property and maybe the applicant could explain whether the well has any use or it's gonna be demolished.
Yeah, there's no, the well will be abandoned. There's no plan to keep that operational.
Okay.
Any else, Rob?
No, 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 not now.
Mr. Catania?
I'm good.
Alright, with that said, I will offer a motion to have council approve, draft a resolution of draft approval. Draft the resolution of draft of approval. Draft approval. There you go. Too many drafts.
Second.
I'm gonna go with Robert this time.
That's all good.
Gotta spread the wealth around a little bit.
Alright, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you have four ayes.
And so for the applicant, Monday is when you need to make your submissions for the revised plans and the corrected survey. So that that can. Eliminate some of the issues that we've been discussing tonight.
Understood.
And then Chairman, Mr. Chairman, should I distribute that truck turning template or Steve, do you have it? Is everybody comfortable with that?
Natalie, I, we've used it on another project, but if you could just send it to me, just to make sure we're using the right one. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Any else?
Natalie, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Next on the agenda, Beer World. No, Tommy doesn't mean we can drink. You want to discuss the post-site plan and special permit for the construction of a single-story fifteen thousand square foot commercial building? For the use of two retail store to include sale of beverages, Beer World and Redemption Center for return of recyclable cans and bottles. Said properties located one fifty-nine Route thirty-two in Central Valley and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section two-two-six, Block one, Lock nine dot two. Who? Oh, Dominic's staying on. So you, you here for this one too, Dominic?
I am, I am. It's actually my privilege. I'm very excited to be representing the new project within the village, new proposed project. I am here tonight with Project Manager John Safe. As well as the Civil Engineer who's designing this project, Larry Marshall, and our traffic consultant is Carlito Holt. And so we just made an application to you. We try to put our best foot forward and do as much engineering as possible. At this early stage to give the board a sense of, of the overall proposal. But with that said, I think I'll turn it over to Larry to walk you through the plans.
Yes, good evening. So is it? Can I share my screen? Is that something that I can do or?
Give me one sec. Alright, you should be able to show your screen now, Larry.
Okay, great. Just give me one moment. Alright, so what I brought up is the, is the site plan. Please let me know if you can see all, see that. Okay, so I'm gonna actually skip first to the second sheet of the plan set. Get there. Here we go. So this is the existing conditions plan. This is the survey. This is located on the Westerly side of Route thirty-two. This is the existing dugout facility, the dugout ice cream stand. So kind of give you a perspective of, of what the site looks like. The jewelry store is on the north end. The motel is on the south end. And then this, this extends back to a residential district along the Westerly side of the property. So what we're looking to do is actually raise all of the existing improvements on the site, the dugout, the gravel area. As well as the shed and the remains of the miniature golf course that was in the back. Which is now very overgrown, but it, it still is there. So all of that would be removed as part of this. And then we would actually be clearing a portion of, of the site. So I've switched over to sheet three of the, of the plan set. Kind of outlining that, that the areas that would be cleared and the, the portions of the site that would be removed, you know, portions of the improvements that would be removed. So what we are looking to do is actually develop a, a, a single building, fifteen thousand one hundred and ten square feet in size. With the, with a Beer World facility being the, kind of the. The, the, the mainstay inside the, inside the building and then the secondary use would be the, the Redemption Center located on the. On the Westerly half or Wesley portion of the, of the building. The entrance to the site would be, right now, the entrance to the site is basically the entire width. Of the, of the property. There's no controlled entrance. What we're proposing to do is actually control that entrance. Neck that down to a, a single minor commercial entrance. We've lined that entrance up with the proposed entrance on the Easterly side for the, for the proposed hotel that's over there. We've also shown a connection of the sidewalk that's on the north side of the property in front of the. Jewelry facility as well as the existing. The existing sidewalk on the south side of the property. So that would be a, a continuous connection to those, for those pedestrian facilities. And then from there, we, we do have fifty, we do propose fifty parking spaces for the proposed site. Those parking spaces are located along the side and the rear consistent with the zoning code. And based upon the zoning calculations for this, this does require sixty-two parking spaces based upon the proposed use. We are seeking a waiver or a reduction in the, in the total parking, number of parking spaces down. To by twelve to that, to that fifty that we do propose. The type, if, if you've ever been to a Beer World facility, there are several in the area. They don't demand a lot of parking. So we don't, we certainly don't want to add any more impervious surface to the site consistent with the E C. Requirements as well as just overall impervious surface, no need to have a sea of parking if it's not necessary. So we are seeking a, a reduction in that parking requirement by twelve spaces. We do have a proposed dumpster straight in. It would be enclosed as shown in the plans. I do have, I'm gonna switch over here and. Actually see if I can share a different screen here. Bear with me. What's going on? So we, we have prepared some preliminary. Renderings for the building.
You're not sharing.
Yeah, I, I, I know that. I'm, I'm having a little trouble. Just give me a second. There we go. So I'm gonna switch over to. Why is this not going there? Okay. Can you see the rendering now?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a preliminary rendering that the applicant has put together for this store. Again, consistent with your zoning code, they have shown a peaked roof. And then covered entrances for the two storefronts. And again, this is very preliminary, but some, some stone facade. Basically a stone, stone wainscoting and then pillars on, on the sides and corners. And then we would be doing a hardy plank siding. A green hardy plank siding, standard asphalt shingles. And then we would do a PVC. Trim board around, around all of the entrances as well as the, the windows.
So that would be a, just a regular three-tab asphalt roof?
That is the, I, I believe that's what's being proposed. This is a little bit more of an architectural.
I was gonna say, because that looks like a cedar shake or like one of the, yeah, architectural roofs.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not, it's, that's something that we're gonna have to clean up, but it, it's a, it's a, it's not a three-tab shingle. It is an architectural shingle, but you know, it does, it's not as fancy like scalloped as this is being shown. So that is something that we'll have to clean up. We've provided a couple of different views of it. Kind of in the, in the rear as well as the, as well as the kind of a close-up view of it. Obviously very preliminary, you know, looking to get feedback from the board on it. But it's kind of our, our best, but best foot forward to present what we were looking to do on the site. In addition to the site plan, we've also provided a traffic study that was prepared by Carlito Holt. So we, we have presented that as well as a, a stormwater pollution prevention plan and a fully AF for the board's consideration. We have received, you know, the board's comments, you know, specifically relating to the engineering portion, the, the, the site civil. You know, we don't see anything outrageous there that we can't take care of.
Thank you very much for that, Larry. Natalie, ladies first?
Righty. So I will say Dominic mentioned they did a lot of engineering upfront and I do think that the plan is well-prepared. And they already had a comprehensive SWIP as well. So, you know, it's always nice to kind of get a good foot forward on these things. So. But it is the first appearance before you and, you know, we can't not provide a lengthy memo. So. We had some comments and, but I think really just to kind of drill down into where we think that this application is headed. Right now is, there is a threshold issue where the LC zone allows retail development up to eight thousand square feet. And they are proposing a building footprint of fifteen thousand square feet, twelve thousand that is designated to retail. So this application, in our opinion, does need to be referred to the ZBA. And again, since that appears to be the next, the general next step, we tried to identify other areas that might require interpretation or opinion from the ZBA. Including the front yard setback and signage. So the code requires that new development in the LC zone be setback equal to or greater than the average setback of the buildings on adjacent properties. The plan looks like it's roughly complying, but it's something that the applicant should confirm. And if the planning board decides to make a referral to the ZBA tonight, then it could be included in your referral so that the ZBA looks at it and, you know, a thorough way. Also on signage, the applicant has proposed the building to fit the lot. So at this time, two signs are shown on the south face of the building. But the north and the east face of the building are also highly visible from Route thirty-two. The code allows two signs on a property, but if they intend to have signage on both the north and east face. Then we think that should be something that's discussed with the ZBA and have their opinion solicited early on. And it's sort of, in our opinion, kind of makes sense. I mean, if southbound traffic is coming along, if there's no monument signed, then they may want to have it advertised that that is gonna be a Beer World building. Some of the other more critical comments that we think, you know, obviously the applicant has already discussed that the, they're gonna request a waiver for parking. That's something that the board needs to consider at the appropriate, at the appropriate time. And early DOT input for the access improvements is gonna be required. We've got, you know, a few applications now in that location which the DOT is considering. So. That'll be important and we assume that the applicant has maybe even applied to the DOT, but they could advise the status. And then the rest of our comments, I think it's just gonna come down to future plan revisions. So I don't really want to. Bore you with all the details. That's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie. Carlito, have you guys made an application to the DOT yet or?
The application, excuse me, application hasn't officially gone in. It should be going in this week. We were just finalizing the application, buttoning it up and getting ready to ship it out. We had preliminarily discussed it with DOT. On a call with them. When we had a joint call with the two hotel applications and we brought this application up, I think. You know, absent getting the, them seeing all the numbers and everything, I think, you know, as Larry mentioned, right now, the, the curb return. For the property is pretty much the whole site frontage. So I think, you know, DOT is gonna look at this as a positive as far as access control by bringing it to one controlled access point. So it's not. Kind of like the wild, wild west along that portion of Route thirty-two where you're gonna make your turn in and out of the site.
Right.
Create a lot of safety issues, but you know, I think once we get that into DOT, we'll get, you know, more formal feedback.
Okay. I know we got, Phil's got a lengthy report with traffic. There's a bunch of things to talk about here. So let's jump over, I'm sorry, does the rest of the board have questions for Natalie? No? Go ahead, Phil.
Good evening again, Philip Greeley. So we prepared a memo dated April first. As Carlito indicated, at the joint meeting we had with DOT to discuss the hotel applications. This application had just been made to the village. I think actually Natalie had compared, prepared kind of a composite plan. That showed the relationship of both hotels and this property. And, and we did discuss it with DOT. It was, it was too early for them to provide any detailed comments. But they did like the idea of, you know, defining the access to the property. With that said, our memo covers about seven or eight items. I'll just run down those quickly. The existing traffic volumes that they used in their study were reasonable and consistent with. The data that's been presented for the hotel projects. They did do projections that included traffic for all the various projects in the corridor. There's a list of about half a dozen or so projects, including both hotel projects. At the time of the study, they had used general retail trip generation estimates. And a couple of the items that we're asking for is, since there are existing Beer World facilities. That it would be useful to get some real data for that type of use or something that would be closer to it as opposed to a general retail. And, and that's important in terms of both traffic and parking with the waiver that they're requesting. I think for this type of use, it may be more reasonable to request that. But we would like to see some, some hard data from some of the other facilities to help support that. You know, ITE does not, the Institute of Transportation Engineers doesn't have a specific category for this exact use. There are other uses. They do have information on redemption centers and, you know, but, but I, I think it would be very helpful to the board and to us. And to DOT to see data from some of these other existing Beer World facilities. The other items really tie more into the access. We'd like to see the treatment of how the left turns into the site will be coordinated with the. Improvements that are being done in anticipation of the hotel and the reconstruction of Turner Road. And the other item relative to that is an analysis of what happens if that doesn't proceed. So we need to see how this will function both with the hotel in place. And clearly, without the improvements of that project doesn't proceed. That's significant in terms of operations and. We, we, we need to see that. We also need to get the input from DOT. If you remember at the discussion on the hotels. There was an indication of not only the realignment of Turner Road and widening of thirty-two to provide this left turn lane. There was also a discussion about the need or DOT's position on a signal. A traffic signal somewhere in this vicinity. To create, help create some gaps and to accommodate left turn movements. So again, that's very significant. If DOT says that they want the signal at Turner Road, we need to see how that would affect. The driveway positioning on this site. I, you know, I think that comes. the driveway positioning on this site. I, you know, I think that comes into play. If the signal is further to the south, then, you know, that would have different, you know, benefits for all of the applicants. So I, I think it's all spelled out in our memo, but we need input from DOT. We need some further documentation of trip generation and parking. And we need to see the plan clearly of how the striping would be handled with the improvements at Turner Road. And of course, the analysis with and without the improvements, if, if for some reason the hotel, the Marriott Hotel project does not proceed. So I, I think those are the highlights of our memo. Again, the parking waiver, again, I think we need to see some more data before we can give you a go on that. And then, you know, the applicant still has to provide some additional details for the DOT and the application, the site distances as to the driveway entering and exiting movements and other related details. But I think at this point, you know, the study was done according to standards and we just need to get some more information and input from DOT since 32 is their road.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you for bringing up the, the sightlines. I had a note about that. I think is, is going to be big here. There's a crest in 32, right by the dugout. So if you're coming up 32, was that north? No, south. If you're going south on 32, that, that crest comes up and that's where the, the potential turning lane, they want the realignment for Turner Road wants to be. So I'm concerned that's, that's going to sneak up on people as they come up. So I'd like to see the sightline, how the sightlines work out of the entrance from Beer World, you know, making a left. And I know it's a double yellow line. I'm going to say nobody's going to make a left, but if anybody sits outside the dugout right now, everybody.
They all make lefts.
They all make a left. Everybody makes a left.
I do.
So we're going to want to see that. And as far as parking, this is a chain. So we should be able to get some real world statistics on. You know, let's, let's, you know, let's look at worst case scenario. I'm going to guess Memorial, like maybe Memorial Day, July 4th, somewhere around there, because that would probably be your, one of your busiest times, picnic barbecue season. You know, the other holidays are, are, you know, beer holidays, but think, think about it's the summer. Typically, everybody drinks parties and stuff in the summer. So I think that would probably be your peak parking time. I know I've been to the one in New Windsor before and that one can get a little full depending on the, the time of year. So that'd be great for that.
Also, Chris, to follow up on that. The Beer World stores that I've seen vary in size. And so when they are indicating the, the real life traffic counts or however they're going to do it, they should reference it to the size of the store as well.
Compared to the other beer worlds, is this larger, bigger, middle of the road?
The, this one is a little bit larger than the one that's in Middletown or in the town of Walk Hill. This one's a little bit larger than that. So it, it is on the larger size side. I will say that the, the Beer World in, in the town of Walk Hill does contain all of their corporate offices as well. So there's a great deal of, of office staff associated with that facility. So the parking counts are generally a little bit higher there due to that, that office staff. But we can, I, I'm sure that Carlito would write a, a full breakdown parking based upon size of, of facility as well as the specific uses of the facilities. You know, whether they have offices within them or they, they're solely a beer world facility.
Yeah. And, and I'll just add, you know, we, our intention, I think, was always to, to survey the existing sites and relate them to the size and the amount of parking and traffic. However, when we were preparing the study, we were really more in the throes of COVID. And we didn't think that the data would be as reliable. And I think now that, you know, we're hopefully emerging, I think we can get more reliable data at those facilities and then relate it. I think, I think we tried to represent from IT data what would be on the more conservative side. So I think we're confident that the, the real world data will prove to be in line with or, or lower than, than what we projected.
And, and Mr. Chairman, you mentioned New Windsor. If that's the one that's near Vales Gate, you know, then that's, that's an older facility. That's an affiliate of, of Sunny Patel and, and, and his, and his other stores. The, you know, the newer stores like the ones in Walk Hill and also there's a new one up in Kingston, you know, are, are much more akin to the design and the layout and the level of, you know, a presentation that is what's being proposed here in Woodbury.
All right. Do any of your other sites have the redemption center?
They, they all do. Yeah, there, there are, there are several that have actually separate stores, separate buildings for redemption. And then there's, there are stores that have it incorporated as a separate part of the facility.
The way this is proposed.
Yeah, yeah. Like Pine Bush and Walk Hill have it within the same building. As does Monticello. Monticello is really there more consistent with what's being proposed here. You know, that it's a completely separate facility, separate store, if you will. But every, every facility has the redemption. That's, that's a big part of their business is redemption. Making it easy for people because nobody wants to feed a machine at a supermarket. They want to make it easy for people to, to bring back those, the, the cans, whether it be soda cans or beer cans or any, any other can, any other redeem, redeemable cans. They want to make it as easy as possible so that people spend more time, you know, shopping as opposed to returning.
And I see the loading dock is on the side in the rear. So typically deliveries are typically via straight truck or are there trailers that will be coming in too?
The, the size of the vehicles that, that enter the beer world vary. Because you can get a lot, you can get deliveries from craft brewers, which are delivering, delivering in a small box truck or a straight truck. There are the, the low boy deliveries, like, like what you see, get Anheuser Busch or, you know, Dana distributors, those facilities. They, they distribute with the, the truck and trailer, the, the lower truck and trailer with the, with the side entry doors that roll. I'm sure everybody's seen him at the local gas station taking up 12 parking spaces. So it, it does vary. It depends on which brewer brewery is making the delivery. You know, or, or which, which wholesaler is making the delivery really? Cause you're not going to get deliveries from individual brewers. So there, there is a, there is a, a varying size of vehicle that makes the delivery.
So I guess we'll need a, a maneuvering plan would probably be something we'd want to see. With the, to make sure that all, worst case scenario works out, you know, if an AC wheeler can make it in in a straight truck and, yeah, so.
Yeah. And that, that's actually something that Natalie had requested in her memo was a, a truck turning diagram to make sure that the facility can manage it. That we're not going to run into, got, not going to need to utilize any parking spaces for that maneuver.
And then the redemption center, the crush, I presume you will crush the cans and stuff at site or?
Yes.
Now that stuff, where does that, does that get all stored in the building or is that going to be stored outside and wait to be picked up?
There's no outside storage on these facilities. They all get stored in interior.
Okay. And how often does that stuff get collected?
It all depends on how busy the facility is. You know, some of their beer world stores are very, very busy with redemption. Others are not. So they scheduled the, scheduled pickups based upon how busy the redemption center is. We can find out exact data, a kind of a, a, a range of what we can expect. But I do know, you know, certain facilities like in the Beer World in Peekskill does a tremendous amount of, of redemption. You know, whereas the, the Beer World in Pine Bush does a relatively low number of redemptions. So they, they, they have to adjust based upon, you know, how many cans are being, cans and bottles are being redeemed.
But it would be still, it would still be during like normal business hours. Wouldn't be like a midnight, I'll come and fix this stuff.
Yeah, they don't do anything after hours. Their, their facility operates from a standard, you know, they're standard open to, to close hours. They, they don't have, they're not stocking shelves late at night or through the, or, or early in the morning. They're not making deliveries in those times. It's, it's really, you know, you're, if the store operates from nine to nine, that's when everything is occurring. That's when deliveries are, deliveries are being made, pickup is being made. The only thing that I, the only thing would be, you know, refuse, which you can't control the time that they come and pick up.
Yeah. And it's because you butt right up against houses there. So, you know, I'm three o'clock in the morning. I'm sure someone would be thrilled to hear backup alarm is the guy tries to get into the loading dock.
They don't have any, they, they really control that very well, making sure their deliveries are happening while staff is present. You know, that, that, that they don't have somebody sitting in the, in the parking lot for, for six hours waiting for it to open.
And then is the odor controlled somehow? You know, you have like crushed cans and bottles with fermenting alcohol. And you get a hot summer day or something like that, you know, that smell can get quite strong.
Yeah, um, they actually have their redemption facility, you know, they're, they're washing right, right there. So when you redeem, you know, you drop everything off, but they're washing there to, to reduce that odor. You know, because nobody wants to go to a, go to a redemption center that smells like a frat house.
And I may have missed into the paperwork, but I didn't see a water usage.
So we, we did provide an estimate. And, and Natalie did call that into question. We did use some water saving fixture calculations for it. I can go, I can look at that if you, if you bear with me.
Right now, the reason I'm asking is if you're rinsing, you know, if it's a busy redemption center and you're rinsing all these bottles and glass and is that, are you recycling that water? Or is that just all fresh water that's constantly being reused and then dumped down the drain?
I, I'll find out more information for you on that. I, I don't know the particulars. I just know they do, you know, a washing and a rinsing. So.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Next time you come in front of us, just get an idea.
Sure.
Natalie, would it be helpful if in addition to the real world traffic on their other stores with respect to water usage, would that be helpful?
Yes. And I think they, well, actually I believe Larry included that in the narrative or at least somewhere in the application documents. I'm sorry. I just don't recall exactly where. But I believe it was an average of 300 gallons per day. But similar to what you discussed with truck traffic, like that would be helpful to know in comparison to what size of the store that was typical of. And also similar like the washing. So we would want to know how that affects, you know, that, that calculation.
Wait, we can provide you actual water usage rates for a couple of stores. We can certainly provide a decent amount of data for the town of Walk Hill store, which has been open for over about a year and a half, I believe, or two years. And then that does have offices in it. So the water usage is a little bit higher there. But we also have data that we can obtain from the other stores that, that, that have been in operation. We can certainly provide you with a breakdown.
Be good. And I know at this time, the estimates are conservatively higher than what you had already represented is the actual usage, but it's helpful to have that comparison.
Yeah. The, the estimate that I provided was based upon DEC manuals and we, we know that, that they're, they're just, they're significantly higher than what the, the stores are actually using. So we, we will provide some, a, a, a thorough breakdown of, of stores and their usages.
Thank you. Rich, Rob, Tommy, any other questions with traffic? Natalie, I didn't forget about you yet, Jonathan, just.
Okay.
We're just, we're talking about a lot of things. I just want to make sure we're, we're, we're grabbing everything as we go along.
Yeah. The, the question I have is, when you met with the DOT, did they give any indication on timeline? When they would approve where the traffic light would go?
No, the, the discussion was whether or not they would consider a traffic signal in this section of the car. So really the first question was where would they consider and approve a signal? And we asked the question, you know, how that would be implemented also. So the first thing is to just identify where it would be permitted. And their initial comment was it's dependent on the traffic generation. So if you look at it from the standpoint of both hotels moving forward, beer world, everything else that's out there. You know, that's what's going to drive their decision to a certain extent on the, the total volumes there.
I think we, we, we got them from, no, we're not going to put a traffic light in. So well, now we're actually going to maybe consider it. But we're still not saying yes. I think that's, I think that was a takeaway.
That's a, that's a good summary, Chris.
I think that was a takeaway from that conversation.
And they also didn't say that, they said that if they were going to do it, they are still unsure whether or not it's going to be at Turner Road or at Oakland.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. So the question I have is knowing that if they decide to put the traffic light at Turner Road or the other location, how would that impact this application going forward, knowing the proposed entrance is kind of in the middle where the traffic light might go? And is there an opportunity, if they do make a decision and let's say it goes to Turner Road, is there an opportunity to revise the site plan? You know, rearrange the building, achieve the same goals and, and make that entrance with the proposed traffic light?
So I, I, I think, you know, Carlito can weigh in a little bit more on it, Rich, but, you know, we, we did look at that. I think the location in terms of the realignment of Turner was aligning more with the motel driveway. If I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And I don't think it went, it could go far enough to, to achieve the, the close to 90 degree alignment that DOT wanted. That's where it currently would go. Okay. I, I have some feelings that, you know, Oakland may be the better location overall, but that's DOT's decision. I think your question is important because if they decide that it goes at Turner, we would like to see the queuing analysis because then the driveway to beer world becomes more critical as to how it would operate. If, if the signal went in at Oakland, which would really combine all of the other uses down in that area to create the, the signalized intersection, it would create some better gaps for the other driveways to the north, such as the motel and this driveway and some of the other driveways before you get up to Estrada. So. You know, again, it's, it's in DOT's court right now. Yeah. As Chris said, they went from, no, we don't want a signal to, you know, we're, we're going to consider it and we're going to advise where it should go.
And the one other, one other item on the location of the Beer World driveway, it was located to align opposite the proposed Marriott right in, right out driveway. So that, that's what dictated the location for where we located the Beer World driveway so that you had more access control along 32 and not offset curb cuts on opposite sides of it. I think, I think to Phil's point, if, if the signal were to be located at Turner Road, there would need to be queuing analysis to ensure that Beer World driveway wasn't going to be impacted. But I think the spacing would be such that it could be worked out with the signal timings. But I agree with Phil. I think if, if the signal goes in, it's more likely at Oakland.
Okay. Thank you. I, I know Jonathan's jumping at the bit here, but so what is, is there any chance we can get the DOT to come out and actually look at this, this, this area? Like I, I understand statistics are good and numbers are good and reports are great. But I think they really need a real world trip to come out here and kind of see what 32 is like in the morning and what 32 was like in the afternoon. I mean, I'll buy him a cup of coffee if, if that. and what 32 is like in the afternoon. I mean, I'll buy him a cup of coffee if, if that's okay.
Well, right, right now it's hard enough to get two DOT people in the office at the same time. Um, but I agree with you. I think, you know, once they at least digest this plan and the whole, you know, position on the signal, I think the next thing would be for them to come out into the field. Maybe not in rush hour, but you know, close to the rush hour, uh, to see what actually transpires. And, and also to look at each of these access points. I, I mean, just as you pointed out, you know, uh, the driveway at, at the, um, for Beer World, you know, has to take into account that vertical curve on 32. And you know, similarly, you know, we had comments about the, the right turn in, right turn out for Marriott. I think, you know, on, on paper, it looks like one thing, but out in the field, DOT, you know, may get a better perspective of everything. So I, I think we can make that petition. Um, and as soon as this application, I think Carlito said the application was going in this week.
This week, I think, yeah.
So if the application goes in, then they have all, all the applications in front of them. So we'll make that request.
All right, cool. Thank you. Cause I know there may be another application coming forward, adjacent lot to the hotels relatively soon. That really will throw another pickle into this whole thing. So. It, it just, just when you thought.
The barrier, this way we get DOT all in one shot.
Just when you thought nothing else could go, go on. I hear whispers and it's not just the voice.
There's lots of voices in your head?
No, no. All right.
Just, but just from a DOT perspective, I think one thing that's important to note is that, um, looking at the two hotel applications and this application, um, this application is an existing use with an existing access to 32 as opposed to the other two uses that don't currently have access. And the access that would be proposed, um, that exists today is going to be improved. Right? So I, I think, I think that, that's definitely something that makes this application kind of stand apart from those other two applications where it's an existing access, but it's going to be get, be improved.
Oh, I, I agree with you a hundred percent that it would be an improved, it would be an improved ingress, egress, but I think the traffic pattern is going to change considerably from a, a seasonal, you know, three and a half months out of the year, um, you know, to, uh, uh, not 24 by seven, but a, a 12, a, a building that's used 12 months out of the year. So I think, you know, that's going to change the dynamics just a little bit over there. But listen, we'll work through it all. We know we've, we've, we've had the meetings. I know there's a lot going on and we'll, we'll get through it. It's like traffic is the big thing right now, right here. All right. So anything for, else for Phil from the board? Before we go to Jonathan, I could see him. He's, he's foaming at the mouth. All right, Jonathan, let us have it.
Okay. Uh, gosh, what a buildup. Um, you should have my memorandum, uh, dated April 1st. Uh, I won't go over the, uh, the, uh, zoning comments really, but it's cause we've, we've really done that. Uh, uh, of course, uh, you know, the, the key is getting a, a variance application in on that building area over 8,000 square feet for the LC zone. Um, on the landscaping plan, our comment six, we have some specific comments on, um, on compliance with the variety of landscaping standards. Uh, the, the, the plans look pretty good, but we would like to see some more, uh, plantings on the, uh, end of the retention pond that's along, uh, Route 32. Uh, and also, uh, along the north side of the building on the north property line and the western plantings along the R1A district. Um, there are standards for when you're up against a residence district, those need to be met. On the lighting plan, uh, we noted that you had specified luminaires with a color temperature of 5,000 K. Uh, we'd like to see those at 3,000 K, give them a warmer type of light. Um, it isn't like a all holds barred kind of commercial district is a limited commercial district and you have your residences back there. So we'd like to see warmer, warmer lighting. There was very minor spillage shown of light onto the, to the south. I think Natalie noted that. Also, so we'd like to see the lighting adjusted. We've discussed the, um, off street parking waiver at length. And, uh, uh, we did note that the, uh, historic preservation office, the ship bow did advise that the site is an archeologically sensitive location, uh, so that will, you know, need to be addressed, uh, as, as part of, uh, seeker. And, uh, really our memos, uh, addition to the list of, of things to, uh, get a little detail on is uh, mostly what it goes over is lighting and landscaping. Um, the other, the other, um, the engineers' memos have covered the other, uh, points.
Um, Jonathan, with number 14, the arch- archaeological, architects, who, archaeological comments, wow, I'm tongue twister for me.
Yeah.
Um, someone had whispered to me that there's potentially an old cemetery on this plot of land. Is that something that would be discovered during this?
It certainly would. Uh, if that's the case, I don't know why the ship out people picked up a flag, uh, but that's the, the, uh, a, a phase one, one survey is not a deep one. Um, you know, uh, but someone would need to come out and just look for evidence that maybe there's, are graves there, or maybe there's, there's, uh, you know, Indian burial mound or something's going on, but, uh, uh, I, I wouldn't expect, uh, a, a major find, uh, at, at the site of the dugout, but, um, nonetheless, uh, it's been flagged by the state, so.
Yeah, something raised the flag.
If you guys find oil, I get 10%.
We, just to update the board on that, we have retained, um, an archaeologist to complete the phase 1A and 1B, uh, for the project site. Uh, we're using Al Camissa from Tracker Archaeology. Um, he has been retained and, and he should be completing the work very shortly.
Maybe it's just props up over from the old mini valve. Someone, someone left behind. Um, yeah, and, uh, John, I like your, John, I liked, did like your comment on the, um, the, 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 um, temperature rating of the lamps. I know those, the 5,000, those are like those bright white. So I mean, it, would it be possible to change those? I know it's a small ask, but.
It, it's not a problem at all. We'll make that adjustment to the lighting as well as adjust the, the, uh, the lighting locations and orientation to reduce that, that spillover.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. All right. Anybody got questions for Jonathan? Wow, Natalie's working late. The cleaning people are there. All right, um, any other questions or concerns from the board, uh, for the applicant? This evening, I do want to thank the applicant, uh, for preparing a thorough submission to us. Uh, you know, first go around, it was nice to be able to have this, um, level of conversation right off the get go and get a lot of these things out, worked out, or not worked out, but at least out in the open and talked about right away. So thank you for that. Appreciate that. Um, does anybody from the planning board have any other questions for this, for this applicant?
I just have a question. Is this property already purchased or is it in contract at this point?
It's under contract at this point.
Thank you.
Um, so it looks like probably Rick, next steps of the authorized ZBA referral for, uh, square footage setback and signage, right?
Well, I mean, we would, in the referral letter, um, we would indicate that these are possible, uh, issues. Um, it's, as, as Dominic knows, it's up to the applicant to go ahead and determine which variances are needed. And the risk of asking for the right ones or the wrong ones are on the applicant. So, uh, Dominic will put forward a, a, a proper application, but Natalie can go ahead and refer it to say that there are uh, certainly there's one very apparent, um, variance that's needed with respect to the square footage and there may be others. Um, and the applicant will address those when an application is made to the ZBA.
Yeah. And, and if, if I may, uh, that's absolutely certainly correct. And, uh, and as a general statement, we're, we're very eager to make our application to the ZBA. We, I identify as you do, that this is a threshold issue. Um, but I, I just want to focus on that for one second. The, the area with, the issue with the square footage is not the overall size of the building. It's the size of the store. Um, because sizes of stores within the LC district are limited to 8,000 square feet per store, but it doesn't restrict the overall size of the building. So in other words, to look at this a different way, there could have been, you know, an 8,000 square foot store and then another 7,000 square foot store all within this building and it would have been compliant as far as that issue is concerned. We know we're proposing more than that and we're proposing a 15,000 square foot building that has a redemption center attached to it. And we understand that we need variances for it. Um, but we'll put our best foot forward before the ZBA hopefully, and, uh, we would like to go, uh, to them as soon as possible.
And, and, uh, that's an excellent point, Dominic, but as you know, um, that's something that this board is going to be, uh, bound by what the ZBA determines on that. And, and I, I imagine that part of your application will be an interpretation to allow you to proffer that position to the board, or alternatively, if they don't, then you need the area variance for it.
Yes, I, I understood, understood.
And I guess the, the, the other critical interpretation is what is redemption center? Is it a type of store? Is it a type of retail store or, or is it a service? And then, then what category is it? So there's a lot to interpret.
On, on that, I, I believe that, uh, the building inspector has opined that it's an accessory to the primary use on, on the site. Uh, and so, so we'll, uh, we'll abide by that restriction, but I think, you know, we're proposing this size building and, and you're absolutely correct, Jonathan. Like, you know, it does raise questions as to, you know, whether or not it's entirely separate or not. Um, but, uh, and we acknowledge that it's not independent. We would not be proposing a redemption center at this location without the beer world. Uh, so it's, it's a fair point.
And I ask, do they teach the word opine like the first day of law school?
Second day.
It's a fancy way of saying you think, you think this, but I think that.
First day, they teach lawyers how to spell a stopple and, and that's what really distinguishes us.
Yes.
And the other points that I, that I had, Mr. Chairman, um, and I noted in my memo to the board, um, and that is that, um, the applicant showed, um, some of the renderings of what it's going to look like. And certainly, um, it has not put forth, um, sort of a concrete block building. Um, they have tried to comply with the code, but the, um, I think the planning board members should look at, uh, the provisions of, um, the LC district because it is very clear. It's a very small district, especially in this area, and it's considered a transition district, and it has to sort of, uh, the purpose of it is to blend from the residential, um, properties, um, in this case behind it, um, with the commercial on Route 32. Um, and it's up to the board as to whether or not they believe that the renderings now or with some modifications satisfy that criteria, but that's, that's an important issue for the board. Um, is the aesthetics of this, given the zone that it's in.
Yeah, I, I actually want to see it with the new, the different roof, because I actually like the roof that's on it now. So I want to see how, what it looks like with the roof you're actually proposing. So I know you, on your next submission, if you could, I guess swap out the roof tiles.
Okay.
Sorry, I cut you off.
Sure, that's, that's fine. Uh, the other two issues that I, um, noted was one, this has been referred to the county, uh, for GML 239, uh, M referral. The county is, uh, reported back that this is a local determination. So that is all finished and this board can proceed accordingly. And then the final thing is that I think that the board can take the initial seeker steps with respect to uh, this project tonight, uh, and that is to declare its intent to be lead agency. It appears that, um, the involved agencies certainly would be the ZBA and possibly ship O and the DEC. Um, but we could, um, if the board so indicates its intent, um, we would go ahead and circulate uh, that notice of intent to the involved agencies. Um, and you can type this action as an unlisted action.
If, if, if I may, on, on that point, we, we would ask you not to do that at this particular step because we would like to receive feedback from the zoning board without having to complete the entire zoning, uh, excuse me, secret process. And so since this is an unlisted action, uh, circulation is not required as an initial step. It can, it certainly would be appropriate if and when we come back from the ZBA. But if we don't come back from the ZBA with, with either an interpretation or a variance in our favor, then I think, you know, the, the project is probably not going to move forward at all. And so rather than spending more time at this point on seeker related issues, we would prefer to focus right now primarily on this, on the zoning board of appeals.
And so, uh, to the planning board, this is, um, certainly an acceptable way to go. Um, I have recommended it under certain circumstances to other planning boards, depending upon the particular application. Um, in essence, this would be, um, initially an uncoordinated review, which you're allowed to do. Um, and so you wouldn't be sending out the notice of intent, but instead just sitting put and allow an uncoordinated review. That is, the ZBA would hear this matter, they would have to do their own seeker on this, and then it would come back to you. If there were any other agencies, you could then start a coordinated review with the remaining agencies. The reason that it's sometimes advisable, and I don't object to it here, um, is that, um, if it's such a threshold issue, that the project either may take a very big turn or go away if it doesn't get the variances from the ZBA, um, then it's sometimes, um, pretty judicious to go ahead and, uh, allow it to go forward on an uncoordinated review, get that threshold issue out of the way, and then begin, uh, the rest of your seeker review in earnest. So if the board is, is fine with that, I, I have no, uh, problem with, uh, proceeding in an uncoordinated review at this time.
I don't disagree with, like Dominic.
That's the right way.
Yeah, if they don't get their variance, then most likely.
It's all moot.
It's all moot, moot anyway, so. Do I have to, we have to make a motion to, uh, declare an uncoordinated review or no, right?
No, no, it just doesn't, you just don't have to do anything right now on seeker. Um, and we'll wait until it comes back from the ZBA. They will have done their seeker by that time. Um, but they will also not be doing coordinated. So whatever seeker review they do, if it's other, other than, I guess it couldn't be a type two. So they would do their own seeker review, but it's not going to be binding on you with respect to their seeker determination of significance.
That's fine by me. Um, and then Natalie, you're okay with cutting a letter, uh, for ZBA referral, right?
Yes, that's fine. And, um, I think if everybody agrees, I did speak with Gary, um, about the redemption center as being an incidental accessory use, but he didn't necessarily say that he would consider that retail or other. So I think it's worth putting in the ZBA referrals so that everything gets flushed out at one time. So.
Do we need, uh, do we want to have Gary issue a formal, uh, opine on this or?
I'd definitely speak to him about that too. Um, no problem.
I don't want to put the applicant in a bad spot if we have, or you just let the ZBA flush it out, right? I know, I know in the past we've asked Gary to, you know, give us an official opinion on.
We would welcome the opportunity to meet with him if it would be helpful to talk about how, you know, the, these, uh, facilities are going to operate. If, if that would, uh, you know, because we haven't spoken to him yet.
I guess that'd probably be the better way to go.
I would, I would suggest it sort of as a technical matter. He is the actual official who gets to say an interpretation as to whether this is a over 8,000 square foot facility that's not permitted in the LC. And that he could make that determination, give his reasons, and that would be a starting point for the ZBA.
Okay. So I guess Natalie, I guess if you want to have, I guess a quick call with Gary and the, and the, I almost said the customer, the applicant, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, I think it's not atypical for us to prepare our letter and kind of attach what's been discussed so far. And if that's a letter from Gary, then we'll include that with it.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything else from the board or from the applicant on this? No?
No, sir.
All right. Well, uh, we will see you when you get back from the ZBA. Or maybe we won't see when you come back to do, I mean, we'll, 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 we'll find out in a couple of weeks.
That is the intent. So very much appreciated.
All right, take care.
I'm not only just an applicant, I am a customer as well. So that's all right.
Bring samples.
Yeah. Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you, have a good evening.
All right, David here with his balloon test.
I'll tell you, if it made it made me famous, so what else can I say? At least you recognize me when I show up.
I do, I do, I do, I will. I don't know why that was one of the only meetings of theirs I ever watched. And that was a discussion I that I I chimed in on, so it's just stuck in my head.
I'm signing autographs. Inexpensive.
All right. Last but not least, up, I mean. Review and discuss documents submitted for site plan for proposed residential development of a 21 lot cluster subdivision. Said property is located at 1107 Spring Road in Highland Mills. And is known as the Village of Woodbury, Tack Map, Section 213, Lot 1, Lot 7. All right, so David, you're here for the applicant tonight, right?
Yes, and it's good to see everyone, it's everyone healthy despite everything going on. Where we did receive the comments from MTV and from H2M regarding the project and we had opportunity to review them. As we stated in the cover letter, we are trying to use the 1995 plans that were. Previously preliminarily approved for this project as the basis for our conventional plan. And providing the amount of lots that would be the goal to use in the cluster development. As, you know, as with any kind of. Marriage of such a process, you know, we were running into some obstacles that we're trying to overcome. And to get towards the cluster development plan. What's involved or what we presented to you involves the connection road of Serp, now that would be a continuous road from Seven Springs off to Serp Road. It meets the slope requirements. We show it preliminarily in an appropriate width for vehicle access and for two lane road. We've divided up the lots accordingly and along the road. In addition to that, we have two cul-de-sacs that also try to provide the basis for our conventional plan and the amount of lots. That would be ultimately approved or seat. The that's where we, the difference between that previous approved plan and our conventional plan is basically to those two cul-de-sacs. So we're hoping to discuss that further with the board. We did allocate a recreation area as discussed earlier. We did, we. Designed layout some of the lots based on comments from previous, the two previous memos regarding. Rock ledges and things of that nature, so we accommodated that and we outlined it in our cover letter. I will say initially and right off the bat, there are comments on both memos regarding wetlands and stormwater. We agree with all of them, that was an oversight on our part. It was a layer issue as Natalie or and Jonathan could probably. Understand with with the Civil 3D program. Those were the originally located stormwater areas, that's not what we're proposing. Believe me, we do understand the 100 foot buffer associated with wetlands and stormwater. We can easily address that. So the the comments in both memos regarding stormwater and wetlands. We agree with, not an issue to us, we can move on. There were some comments that came up that. We would like to discuss further is a little bit new. In the comments, and if that's okay, I could proceed, Chris, or if you. You don't want to turn the meeting over, it's not a problem.
Yeah, let's just, I want to go, actually, I want to be a little, I want to go with Rick first because I know, Rick, you've rage. Raised a few concerns in your memo to us. So before we discuss the technical details with Natalie and Jonathan. If we can go over some of the details that are in your memo, I think for myself and Tommy. This is my first cluster development or potential, so I'm. I'm not as up to speed on some of this stuff as you are.
Okay, what I think the basic thing that the planning board has to keep ever present in its mind. Is that. The eventual cluster subdivision is really something. The the way I think you should approach it is not to think about the eventual cluster subdivision at this time. What you should consider is the conventional plan put forth. And think of that as if you were going to, you were being asked to approve that. All right, and that's as to, you know, the the formation of the lots. Whether or not the lots are are on topography that doesn't make any sense. Whether or not cul-de-sacs are too long. Everything that you would look at as if you were going to approve this. That's how you should look at the conventional plan. And what the reason you do that, including wetlands and all the other site restrictions. And interconnectivity with other roads and all the other issues that you normally deal with with subdivisions. Is that that's what defines the number of lots. But if you skip too quickly over this conventional plan is just, well, this is a preliminary step to get to the cluster, let's look at the cluster. You really miss out because that define the. The only way that you define the number of lots is determining whether or not it's a subdivision that you would approve. In the configuration that's proposed, or as you say, that it it should be reconfigured before, because you would never approve this particular one. And I'm not talking specifically as to David's plan here. I'm just talking generally with respect to. The way that cluster subdivisions work. Because in my opinion, too many planning boards sort of jump to the cluster view. And you're skipping over a very critical step, and that is, what are the number of lots that we have to deal with? And let's determine that. Once you have that, then you go to the cluster plan, you know how many lots. And now you work on configuration with respect to trying to save open space and the other intentions. That you have and the purposes of a cluster subdivision. And obviously, the board trustees is going to be brought into that aspect of it as well. But I think that the way to look at this is to say, all right, let's look only at the conventional plan. Is this something along with Natalie's comments and Jonathan's comments? Is this something that you would approve? And if not, let's work on that subdivision. To the point that you would say, yes, we could approve this. And then you have the number of lots once you've done that. So I think that's the most critical thing that I would put forth.
Thank you for that explanation, Rick, appreciate it. All right. Natalie, you want to follow up there? With your.
Sure, I totally agree with what Rick just said. I mean, it's so important, I think, to just focus on that. You know, getting this yield map figured out and then ultimately deciding how many lots can eventually be built as part of the cluster. So we have not gotten into a ton of detail in our memo because there are certain. Issues with the net lot area calculations that we raised and lot widths that need to be satisfied. I did want to just talk about those quickly. Because I think it's helpful just for the applicant to, you know, to for us to just kind of have that a little bit of back and forth with the board. So the easements definitely need to be included in the net lot area calculation. And it could have been just the layer thing that you were talking about, David, that makes complete sense to me. The second issue in that part of our memo that I raised had to do with being unable to reconcile the slope areas. With the gross calculations that were provided on sheet C2. So with that, what I was kind of getting at is if you look at the bulk table that you provided and you add up all of those slope areas. Obviously, considering that deductions were made for the 2050 and 80 based on the range of slopes. It didn't add up to the number that was on the overall plan and it may just be because of the road network and and the slopes that are identified there. And so I'd like to see that on an overall basis so I can, you know, see everything's accounted for. The third comment, and I want to apologize to the applicant and actually the board for this too. Is I I realized that there either may be an issue and it required, I need to talk to the building inspector about it. And I did speak with him today. And at first we kind of thought we came to a conclusion and then he said, no, it's a little more complicated than that. So if the board agrees, what I, well, my question about that code provision is, and I realize that I didn't even tell you what it was yet, so. The code.
All in suspense, it's a very.
Yeah, really, oh gosh, so it's.
I'm not happy with it, that I have to say.
Yeah, it's it's confusing, so the the code required, the net lot area. Requirement, the definition for it requires that 80% of the gross minimum lot area of the underlying zone be contained in slopes less than 15%. So when I originally read that, I read. That the applicant is proposing, say, a two and a half acre lot, it complies with the two acre zoning. So the gross minimum lot area, the two and a half acres should have 80% or less of slopes that are less than 15%. 80% or more of slopes that are less than 15%. Then I spoke to Dennis about it and he thought, no, it's two acres because that's the underlying zoning zoning criteria. And then we were like, we got to talk to Gary about this, right? So I spoke to Gary and Gary also needs to look at this further. So with your permission, I'd like to kind of come to a conclusion with Gary and provide that to the applicant. So that they can make the revisions to the plan thereafter. And we can do that in a memo from Gary if you think that that's appropriate. So again, that was something that came up.
That that's the, that's the big one.
Yeah, yeah, because it does, and it's a big impact, I think, on the plan. I mean, at this point, I will say that the calculations that you provided are based on the net lot area. So I think it doesn't address either of those two that we think it could be one or the other, so there does need to be revision. But, you know, we want to get that answer for you so that it's, you know, right on the next go around. Again, the lot width, we need to button that up. This is a, it's going to be considered a realty subdivision application that needs referral to the DOH. And they're going to ultimately review the individual well and septic systems. We've provided some direction to the applicant in that regard, but I just wanted to mention that. The stormwater management was discussed already. We do want to see confirmation of the sufficient grade and width for the cul-de-sacs. That's one of the things you provided a profile for the main road, but not the cul-de-sacs. And then.
We have no problem with that.
Sure, and then another issue that was raised and that we. Had discussed a little bit with the applicant previously was the length of the cul-de-sacs. And I know we have, that council is going to discuss that with you as well. But just for everybody's awareness, the, from what I can, what I gathered from the plan. The two cul-de-sacs are approximately 425 and 550 feet long. And then that, the code stipulation that we're going to go by is 27223. And that's the more restrictive of the two provisions. And in general, it says in general, the length of the cul-de-sacs should not be greater than 400 feet. So I think Rick will talk about that a little bit more with you, but just for comparison, it's 425 and 550. And I do think that those are an unreasonable length, and that's my opinion on that. The homes on 5, 6, and 17 are in steep slope areas. And so kind of going back, David, to, I understand what you were saying about trying to comply with the old, the the prior approval and the plan. And that, and when I say that, it's the 1996 plan, so. You'll note when you look at that, and if the board would like, I could share my screen and kind of show you what plan I'm talking about.
It's a good year. Year I graduated from high school.
Good, so if I can or I can, it's up to you. But just, you'll want to look at those cul-de-sacs and where they're positioned on the plan and the lengths of them. And I think you'll know that where the the homes are positioned on that plan, they are away from those steep slope areas. So it's something that while those lots are bigger, the homes are closer to the road network and the road networks are smaller. So it's just something to think about. We did note something about the parklands, but I want to defer to Rick on that and that Bayswater case. And then. They're showing now the physical connection to Serp Road. And we think that's appropriate. You do have the authority to waive that provision, but then. It's obvious, and again, we're talking about the conventional plan now, but when it's going to be the cluster subdivision. You will consider whether or not that connection is appropriate or, you know, and. The purpose of here, this code provision for clusters is to preserve that open space and we'll come to that. We did provide some comments on the EAF and. We expect that the applicant will address them as the plan evolves. And that's basically all we have, unless you have any questions for me.
What code section was that for the cul-de-sac?
It's going to be the 27223, and I hope I got that right.
It's 272 dash 23, E as in Edward. And since we're talking about it now, I'll just weigh in that there are two provisions in the code restricting cul-de-sacs. One is 269 dash 27B6. Which says that they can't be more than 1,200 feet in length. And then the one that we just referenced, 272 dash 23E says. Cul-de-sac shall not in general exceed 400 feet in length. When you look at these provisions in context. The first one where it talks about 1,200 feet in length. Are regulations dealing when the village is going to take over a road? And whether or not they should take over a road and it complies with their specifications? So to take over a road, they would generally not take one over, they can't take one over except, I mean, if there's cul-de-sacs of more than 1,200 feet. The other provision, the one we're relying upon, actually deals with subdivision review. And so it's the most applicable. Also, there's a provision in that area of the code saying that this section supersedes others. That are less restrictive, so for various reasons, this is the one that does apply. But as Natalie pointed out. It's not a hard and fast 400 feet, because if it was a hard and fast 400 feet, it would say. The cul-de-sac shall not exceed 400 feet. Instead, this says, cul-de-sac shall not in general exceed 400 feet. So it doesn't define what that in general is. But clearly, that means that it's not hard and fast, and this board has some discretion to vary from the 400 feet. If you do vary from the 400 feet, it should be clear in the record as to why you are. And I don't, I think that there is some limitation saying in general, I'm not sure that you could make them 5,000 feet in length, for instance. I think, you know, 400 feet is there for a purpose, but obviously, it's not a hard stop. No pun intended. And I I think that you you have some flexibility with respect to 400 feet, depending upon the circumstances.
I know this is going to sound like a silly statement, but I'd actually like to hear from the super highway superintendent. With length of the cul-de-sac, because I know it comes an issue when they're clearing snow. As far as how far they could push and where they can push it all.
So I have. I think that's an excellent point, because I think that there are two reasons why. Codes limit the lengths of cul-de-sacs. And I think it has to do with both emergency service providers. So that you have interconnectivity with other roads so that if something gets blocked off, there's ways to get in. And I think the other reason that they're in there is precisely what you're saying, is that for purposes of maintaining the roads and snow plowing. It's it's a lot easier if you don't have these very long cul-de-sacs. So I think that's an excellent idea to go ahead and ask for his input on it, and that can very well inform your decision making.
How does the rest of the board feel about that last Natalie, the memo, we love memos tonight? To. Yeah, I'm good.
Yep.
All right, so thank you, just add it to the list, Natalie, meet us running.
I I think that if. The applicant makes a conventional subdivision plan with workable lots and simply removes. These these 35% plus slope areas. Out of the house lots so that they're in, there there's a recreation requirement, even for a conventional subdivision. You don't put every inch of the land into the house lots, especially when it's this steep. And once you do that, the road network is going to get shorter, all these calculations going to work out. And we won't be trying to, you know, put six pounds of sugar in a five pound bag. And struggling with making this all balance. I I I think if 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 several lots are lost to the steep slopes, that's the right way. To get a conventional subdivision that you could approve, that would have a a yield that you could use for the cluster in in step two. The, the. Am I ready to to sort of go through some of my points?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we're there.
Um, in the, uh, the, the, uh, my zoning comment, uh, six, um, I'll skip to that. It doesn't seem like there's any way that the code would allow you to propose a cluster with more lots than the conventional subdivision plan could yield. So if it says you can, the, the conventional plan says you can get twenty or twenty-one lots, you can't just say, well, we want one extra than that in the cluster. Uh, unless you got a variance, and I don't really see how even that you could try for a variance for something quite like that, but, um, so you simply do have to live with the yield of a conventional subdivision on the site. And one of the things that I focused on in my review was some of these houses would be so much lower or higher than the road than, within, than the road they connect to, that you could not build driveways to them that would meet the driveway slope code. And you'd never be able to get a, uh, UPS truck delivery to the house or anything. Uh, you could barely drive to the house. On lots five and six, in particular, um, the, uh, the houses are between twenty-five and thirty-five feet lower than this cul-de-sac itself. And with that run, um, the, the, that, the driveways accessing the houses, uh, would be at least twenty percent. Uh, and the house sites are in the areas of thirty-five plus percent slope that are identified on the slope analysis sheet, the sheet they could see too. So, um, exactly how you would install a house on a thirty-five percent slope, um, it just isn't, isn't really, isn't really workable. The, the, uh, house site on lot thirteen is also in an area of thirty-five percent slope. You know, as identified in, in the slope analysis. And the, the cul-de-sac serving lots, uh, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, it's a short cul-de-sac. But the, the road, you didn't provide profiles of the, of the cul-de-sac side roads uh, in the conventional subdivision, but that one appears to have a grade of between fourteen and sixteen percent if you just hand scale it over those contour lines. Um, and a cul-de-sac road can't be that, can't be that steep. The, the, uh, also on the, uh, at that lots, lots four through eight is on the top of that nine hundred twenty foot summit. And in order to get that road installed and all those driveways and houses, it would be really difficult to meet the ridge preservation standards and install all of that infrastructure on the top of the nine hundred twenty foot summit. You'd really have to clear everything, and part of the ridge preservation standards are to make sure that such a summit at nine twenty, uh, you know, wouldn't be denuded in order to put in a, a flat cul-de-sac a hundred foot circle, and then all these driveways going, uh, down from it towards house sites. But, and I think that if, if you did a more, um, sensitive conventional subdivision where you didn't just draw polygons over the contours without really looking at how steep it was on those lots. If you really examine, you know, how to get workable house sites in, I think you, you, your yield plan would come out several lots less, and then all of your width calculations, your slope calculations would, would fall into place. Uh, we talked about, uh, wetlands and the hundred foot buffers, so I won't go over that. And I, I guess the other thing that hasn't been, um, talked about uh, is the, uh, uh, code section two seventy-two, twenty-three Q, which is area for parks and playgrounds. Both in, you know, at any, any type of subdivision, whether it's conventional or, uh, cluster is supposed to provide uh, some type of, of land for recreation or, uh, of, of a fee in lieu. And that, it could be that design, maybe designing trails in some of these areas that are extremely steep and having it be a, a parkland in the conventional subdivision is more reasonable than trying to get in the houses on these thirty-five percent slopes. And, uh, I guess the, the other issue is a, a secret, a small secret issue, but a, a, a big a, 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 a critical question is, um, E three D on the, uh, uh, on your FEAF part one form, uh, the, um, ridge protection area is defined by the Woodbury Code as a critical environmental area. So that question should be answered, yes, you do have a critical environmental area on, on this, uh, site. So, uh, we would ask that, that, uh, FEAF question be corrected. I think every, everything else is really, you know, further, further details, but that's the, uh, those are my key comments.
Just on Jonathan's last point, um, though the code says that it's a critical environmental area, the, the town, when it put that in, never followed up with the DEC, never filed it as a DEC. It's not listed on the DEC's list of critical environmental areas.
That's interesting, cuz I looked at the state list and I saw it wasn't on there, and I figured the state made a mistake.
No. Uh, so we have taken the position in this planning board for a very long time that although it says that, it actually isn't yet. Um, and we haven't yet gotten any direction from the Board of Trustees that they want us to follow up with that and do that. But that's, that's always possible is that we can follow up with that. But as of this point in time, it's not a critical environmental area.
Okay, well, I would agree with you, Rick, that if the, that the definition of critical environmental area includes submitting it to the Office of New Paltz and getting it accepted and put by the state. And if you've never done that, then it isn't really one yet.
All right. So, so I retract that comment.
No, good. Glad you, um, brought it up. We're, we're prepared to do the road profiles for the other two cul-de-sacs. Well, there's no doubt retaining walls will have to be introduced, you know, to bring the slope of the one cul-de-sac uh, shallower in its grade, and then the house locations on four and five more closer, uh, to that cul-de-sac. In addition to that, we have to increase the width of the lots along that cul-de-sac to meet the zoning code. So, um, um, I'm feeling okay with that, what believe we can do something with it and, uh, to get it to work. The, um,
David, if I could just weigh in for a second, and this is apropos to what I was talking about earlier that Chris asked me to talk generally about. When you're talking about retaining walls, again, it's not whether or not every retaining wall can be constructed to allow you to have the road at that length, but whether or not the planning board would agree that such a retaining wall would be appropriate in order to extend it. You know, just, just for you, I don't want you to do a lot of extra work. And then the planning board say no, and then you have to redo everything. So I don't know if you want to ask the planning board about, you know, um, whether or not they would believe that it would be appropriate if you have the sizes of the retaining. Obviously, there's a big difference between a, a five foot retaining wall and a forty-five foot retaining wall.
Yeah, yeah, well, these, these retaining walls would be about four to six feet high, uh, as you bring them across. And I did, I did research, uh, section three, ten, thirty-two, and, and it does say regarding the conventional plans that the, the planning board could approve, oh, you know, work along the ridge preservation standards. So, uh, you know, obviously we were happy to find that. And, uh, if the board would allow us to entertain that, it would, it would be along the road. Um, not to extend the cul-de-sac, but to make up the difference in grade to allow a cul-de-sac to be shallower in its, uh, pitch, uh, in, as opposed to what's around the grades. So, um, that is something that we would be prepared to do and, you know, could provide that information.
Chris, sorry, go ahead, Rick.
I was just gonna say that I, I, I think it will be helpful before David goes and redesigns his plan to have a couple of really defining issues, um, from the planning board's viewpoint. Um, one of which I think has to wait, and that's the length of the cul-de-sac, um, until you get some further information and you can sort of decide what you will consider as generally in the area of four hundred feet. Because if, if five hundred plus feet is out of the question, then David has to redesign it with that in mind. And the other are the various issues that Natalie and Jonathan brought up with respect to individual lots on very steep, um, topography. Driveways being, you know, excessively steep, et cetera.
I, we kind of see that now in one of our subdivisions, and I mean, it really throws the whole thing off when you have these houses that are like, you know, you got one up here and you got like one down here, and then you got another one, you got another one that's over here and
And you have the discretion to say, we, that's not something we want, that we want something more moderated between the levels of homes in a particular subdivision. You, some plane board, some planning boards may not care, but certainly you have the discretion to say this is the type of subdivision that we would like and would approve.
It just, my personal thought, just based on the, the elevation and the differences in heights that you're gonna see between these houses, we, we kind of already see it here, and we know it didn't turn out so great. Um, you know, you look at that hillside of that other development and the houses are all over the place.
A little more uniform.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't like that idea. I, you know, I, I'm, that's me. Tommy, I guess, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I like a little more uniform myself. So you, when you say uniform, you mean more or less on around the same elevation? So when you're on a road? Yeah, like Chris is saying, you know, one, one house, you know, up here, one down below and
Cuz then what ends up happening, and what I think we've seen is that once the trees and stuff get cleared out and grading gets done, like, everything becomes visible and nothing really blends into the, into the mountainside. Um, I think we should learn from, of maybe a past mistake and stop, not do that again. That's, that's my few cents on it.
Um, well, and if the, the, the long cul-de-sac that goes up to lot six is lowered into the terrain to make the grade up to it less, so it isn't so steep, uh, you, you'd have to sort of take the top of the hill off in order to get over the hill to the house site. So, so it really, you really just need to be proposing a reasonable amount of earthwork. Uh, it's something that would really, really work. These, these conventional lots have to be, um, as Rick has been, uh, emphasizing, um, these, these have to be like real lots that you could build on and sell. Uh, not just lots that work as a box dropped on a, on a plan sheet.
Um, oh, we know what money, we know what money in engineering, you could pretty much build in any lot that you want, right? If you, if you're willing to dump enough money in something, you can engineer it to get a, to get a house on a, on a lot. I think, I think we've seen that here. If you, if you look at the Route Six Overpass and look straight ahead, you can see there's a house that has four retaining walls in front of it. Uh, try to get it to, to, to be level and built into the hillside. So that's what we, I think this board wants to avoid happening.
Yep.
We, we don't want to see that.
Yeah.
Um, and the whole, and the whole idea of retaining walls to work the cul-de-sac, um, I'd like to just, again, I'd like to ask Rob his, his thoughts on that, cuz when, at the end of the day, I would imagine these roads would be dedicated to the village, right? This isn't gonna be a private HOA. So this, this is something that our superintendent, our highway department would have to, I want, would want them to feel comfortable with it. I don't know anywhere in Woodbury where we've used a retain. Now Natalie, keep me honest here. I'm, I'm driving all through Woodbury right now, and I can't really think of any place we have retaining walls to help make grade for, for, for roads.
Oh, I, I, we have, uh, working on a project right now, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, but, but I mean, your point's well taken, Chris. It's not that, uh, it's gonna be ignored. I mean, the retaining walls are on a property line, they're not within the right of way. Uh, they're not, would not interfere with the DPW. Um, so, but, but it's a point well taken. I, um, you know, I appreciate Rick's thought. I mean, for us to continue in a productive way, there are some things that we need definitive answers at this point. And so, uh, could we just summarize those to make sure we walk away from the meeting and, and I know what points we will get decisions on? So, uh, for example, uh, one, I mentioned the cul-de-sac lengths, um, you know, what degree of variance can we have on that four hundred feet?
The other That one, we're gonna wait for, that's the only one we, we've got to wait for supervisor wanting to get back to us on. Cuz I need him to be comfortable as far as snow removal goes. You know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to call him into a bad spot where he can't even put the snow somewhere. It's hard for him to plow, plow that right now.
Okay, so we would look forward to that as soon as possible, please. And the other, and the other is the, uh, the building department issue on the eighty percent. Natalie, um, it would, I mean, that, to me, that's, I, I, that has a huge impact. Uh, you know, with the, with the calculation. So we will look forward to that determination.
I think Natalie is gonna, we're gonna get a memo off to Gary on that too, right? We talked about getting that out. So as soon as we get an answer, she gets an answer, you'll get an answer on that.
Okay.
For memos.
And the, I, I, I have one clarification here with the, uh, with Natalie or with the board. I, in the, um, easement areas, are we deducting the wetland areas also from the calculations?
Yes, that's very clear in the net lot area, or net lot area definition as well, so.
Okay, so we did, you want a separate cate, uh, a separate column or to show that?
Well, I think you had it in the table. Um, it would be a row. You have it as a row. It's minimum lot area, wetland, easement. Um, but you don't have anything listed under the easements as deducted, so that's just something, yep. I think the way you have the table set up is okay. I think it's just making sure that everything is accounted for.
Got it.
And speaking about wetlands, one of my, I know, I know you have the, you said you were gonna fix this. But in the, uh, in the front wetland, that's along Seven Springs Road, you've got the, uh, the drainage plant in the wetland, but the wetland flag B one, it's, looks to be fifty feet to the curb of, of the road. Uh, so when you're doing your adjustments.
Natalie, can you share the screen? Do you have the ability to share the screen and so everybody could look at what Jonathan's talking about?
Uh, I'm looking at the area of lot one along the, along Serpents Road and across the street is a wetland.
Is that on C three, the map?
C three, yes.
I can, let me just pull, oh, unless you're gonna do it, Chris, that's fine.
Yeah, I already have it up, so.
Okay.
Uh, if you cruise on over to the frontage of lot one, so you can see flag B one, a little trying to be one. Yeah, you got it. That we're making a new subdivision here, and you're supposed to try to stay a hundred feet off of a wetland, definitely stay away from fifty feet. Uh, but in order to build that road right there, it's pretty, it's relatively steep. You know, if, I think lots one and two need to be adjusted to get that entrance, um, a little bit farther away from that wetland so that you're not doing construction within fifty feet.
Well, you know, we, we tried to comply with that ninety-five. Well, you know, we we tried to comply with that 95 plan and that was the entrance that was approved at that time.
Well, you know, not only is the 95 plan not approved, not never built, it may not be a good plan to use. I I don't think that, I I mean, I'm not familiar with the 95 plan. But from how it's been described, just verbally, I don't think I would, if if I were reviewing the 95 plan, I don't know that I would like it either.
Well, it's, well, there's been a lot of changes in the code since 95.
Oh, no, I I I acknowledge that.
One of the, Jonathan, I have not, but I was wondering whether or not you and Natalie looked at this from the new water protection, water course protection law that.
The watershed.
The the water, the watershed protection law covers the area at the uh, other end, the other end of this road, the the wetland to the furthest to the right. This particular one that's right along Seven Springs, that that back there is watershed protection. And the watershed protection says that uh, if you get with between 100 and 50, you need a lot of justification for disturbing that area. If you, and you really have to keep the 50 feet sacredly undisturbed. The 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 other one, uh, the other wetland back at lot one where we just.
Wait, 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 hold on, Jonathan, hold on. If you're saying 50 to 100 feet, if this is the 50 foot buffer here, that doesn't look like that house, that that house is out of 100 feet.
No, and what, that's why we said we want the 100 foot buffer shown.
Okay.
And that and and uh, and that David was saying, oh, we, you know, we were having CAD problems and we didn't show it. But uh, what in my memo, both in for watershed, in the watershed protection and at the other wetland, you're supposed to stay 100 feet away from the wetland. And if you're working between 150, you have to have really strong reasons. And just trying to get the most yield from your conventional subdivision plan and 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 talking about how in 1995, that plan was okay. That's not, those are not good enough reasons to justify working between 150 feet from a wetland. And in this, in this particular case, you can make your case that you want to work within between 150. But in this particular area, you would have to do work within 50 feet of of uh, flag B1 and probably within 50 feet of flag B3 to get that road in because it would need to have side slope. Uh, or even if it, even if you got one of those retaining walls going at that spot, which would be a terrible place for retaining while right at an intersection.
Oh, we wouldn't.
But um, you you you're gonna, you're gonna end up within 50 feet of that wetland.
I'd like to just kind of make a point because I think all of Jonathan's points are very well taken. Um, and I know that we have referenced the 96 plan and really that was to just kind of demonstrate to the board that at that time, only 16 lots were developable based on the code and things have changed. And you know, the net lot area calculations have changed, the water quality protection overlay has been introduced. Your ridge preservation standards have changed. So it was just kind of an idea where, you know, 22 lots are being proposed now. 16 were only approved at that time at, you know, based on a review, an extensive review. But it's not to say that that plan is, um, you know, the be all, end all at all. So um, you know, I think it's just again, up to the applicant to, you know, do their homework of the code and take these comments into consideration and address the fact that there are very steep slopes in this area and the planning board would prefer at, from what I'm gathering, to see that those are either undisturbed or, you know, minimized to the maximum extent practical. Um, and you know, all of these other concerns have to be taken into account.
Yeah, I think the most important lesson that you could learn from that old plan is the number of lots. I I think that if you designed a conventional subdivision plan with 15 or 16 lots, many of these issues would go away.
Well, we're not sure that they will. I think the thing is, is that David.
Certainly would be easier than with 22 or 21.
But what I, you you know, some good points kicking around here right now. And from my understanding, from 96 to now, our our code is, has tightened. We we we've we've re, we've reined things in.
And there's a lot to expand.
So how do we go from 16 buildable lots to 22 buildable lots, 21 buildable lots? Because the whole point of all these code revisions that have been going, going in and the wetland protection overlay district and that have have been to tighten things, not make things bigger. So.
After you've gotten this direction, David, and you get some more direction with respect to the cul-de-sacs, make sure that when you're revising the plan, you are also complying with the uh, the water protection overlay district regulations because that may have a big impact on how you're designing it.
Of course. Uh, again, we acknowledged that from the beginning, so uh, and we understand completely.
So anything, David, or the board, anything else, David, I hope tonight has been helpful with with guidance. I know we do owe you answers on a few things and Natalie is very good at getting that stuff for us and she'll copy you on the memos as soon as we get answers on those two items. I was waiting for Gary. But I want to make sure you're comfortable with where we're going from here. You know, because I know you're gonna have to re do a resubmission, but I don't want you to feel, walk out of this meeting like, what the hell just happened to me?
What the hell's just happened to me? Your points are very clear and I'll, I look forward to getting those three answers. And then I will look forward to reviewing this with the owner and bringing them up to date on what needs to be done.
One thing, sorry, David, you said three answers.
Only it's something good.
Just so that I'm being very clear in my asks of the highway superintendent and Gary. Um, we're gonna get the opinion on the um, 80% reduction for lot area. The length of the cul-de-sacs and what is the third ask?
Um, I believe it was just his thought on retaining walls.
Okay.
Yeah, the Rick.
Kind of just, uh, you know, not that it may, you know, may, but I'm just curious what he has to say on it.
Yeah, just just give an input, you know, let them know it's not going to be in the right of way, let them know it'll be added to DPW.
And, you know, I know that um, the the village and the planning board doesn't really have a technical advisory committee process formalized or a community development review committee or any of that sort of thing where consultants work with applicants offline between planning board meetings. But sometimes I know that you you've authorized such meetings, Chris. And maybe in this case, it would help if the consultants got together with the applicant in an offline type of uh, review session. If if you don't feel that's appropriate, that's, but it's just a suggestion.
No, it's a good suggestion and given the complexity of everything going on in this site right now, um, I think it may, it may behoove everybody to help with the applicant, move the application. Um, at least get, you know, the this technical stuff worked out so the next time David comes back. Uh, we we've got a lot of this stuff kicked, kicked, you know, down the street and we we're okay with it. So I'm okay with you and Natalie and David, if you want to get together and and just the technical aspects and work out this stuff and I'm fine with that. I think the rest of the board would be okay with that too, this way we don't, you know, we we can help move this application a little bit further down the street. Get it subdivision street.
Thank you very much.
I'm here all, I'm here all week. Tip, try to be able to tip your waiter.
Thank you very much for that opportunity. We appreciate it.
Anybody got anything else for David or the consultants or anybody want to get anything off their chest or hang out for a little while? Oh, come on, it's 10 o'clock. It's one of our longer, it's it's been a while since we had.
It's been a little while since we had a long meeting.
Been a while, it's been a while. Uh, all right. Well, thank you, everybody, tonight for your time. I'll offer a motion to close. Thank you. Rich, and anybody want to stay? Or nobody, no, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, I'll see you.